Hello, welcome everyone to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. This is a work session to go over the capital improvement plan for 2019 through 2025, 24. First order of business is to pledge the flag, please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Rob now.
So, tonight we're going to try to do things a little different than they were done last year. Rather than sort of go over the demographics and the sort of broad overview of the community, which we always cover in the introductory section of the capital improvement plan, I'd like this to have more of a conversational feel to it than just a presentation about facts about the community. You guys know your community well, and the demographics and the background information are in the document for anybody who'd like to look at it. But as we go through, you've all had the capital improvement budget now since December 3rd, I think the copies were delivered to you. Is there anything you'd like us to focus on tonight as we go about talking about the plan for the next six years? Anything that jumps out at you that you want us to pay particular attention to or any questions that came to mind that we should be focused on as we go about the presentations tonight? All right. Take it away. You guys are going to make it easy. All right then. With that, I'm going to kick this PowerPoint into full screen mode. And we're going to start off with a mere statement that this is the first budget hearing and the first workshop on the capital improvement program for the 2019 through 2020 through the 2024-25 period. As you know, the capital improvement program here in South Kingstown is a longstanding program that's designed to make sure that we don't have bumps in the road, that we're not, that we're not sort of seeing spikes in capital expenditures because we haven't planned for them. We go through a very extensive organization-wide planning exercise almost continuously throughout the year to make sure that we know what our capital needs are going to be, whether that's the buildings, whether that's land acquisition, or whether that's equipment. And we budget for it, we plan for it, we put it into a list, onto a list, and we periodically review the list and we move things up and down that list, and we try to set numbers to the items that we've put on that list. Each year we produce a capital budget, which is the first of the six years in the capital improvement plan, which includes the items that we have either set enough money aside for so that we can actually buy them in the current year, or are items that are so urgent that we've had to rearrange things and move them up in the schedule on the list so that they can be purchased this year. This is a really comprehensive and frankly, you know, it's an astonishingly smart program here in South Kingstown. Steve and the department heads have done this four years. It's a program that is incredibly effective. It's one that recently the University of Massachusetts called out, they were out looking for good examples of capital improvement programs around New England, and they stumbled upon ours. They called me up and said, hey, you guys have got one of the best capital improvement budgets, one of the best capital improvement programs I've seen anywhere. The director of the program up at UMass said to me. Can we feature this? Can we, can we get you guys to come talk about it? And the University of Massachusetts pulling you out and saying, you know, of all of the municipalities across New England, that South Kingstown has one of the very best is really, I think, testament to Steve's efforts in the past, absolutely testament this year to Trish's effort, just extraordinary design. The debt management program that you see in this, this budget is a creation that Trish struggled long and hard and really put a lot of effort into. It's really an extraordinary program. Steve actually came back and helped us with this capital improvement program, and I want to extend my thanks to Steve Alfred for doing that. He's not, under no obligation to do so, and yet he cares so much about that community that he wanted to make sure the transition from the capital improvement program last year and this year worked as well as it could. It couldn't work as well as it does, the budget would not, this capital improvement program and the capital budget would not be as strong as they are if it weren't for Trish and the department heads. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Trish. I've got it, yeah.
The six-year capital program is a live-in document that's reassessed and updated annually. It's a financial plan, includes project descriptions, costs, and sources of funding. First year of the program is the capital budget, which is incorporated into the upcoming fiscal operating budget. The subsequent five years is just a plan. It's a plan of activity subject to budget approval and subject to change to unforeseen circumstances and funding uncertainties. It's important to keep in mind here that the outer years is just a plan, because when I, I created this year's budget, this capital project, I used the stage one application for the school department. The stage one application, as we know, was focused around closing Wakefield School in Curtis Corner, but we have since changed that. This budget will change next year, however the decision is approved. So just understand as we move forward, the numbers you're seeing here are the initial numbers with a $76 million bond question. So as part of the process, I think it's important to note that although the department directors submit their application to the town manager, the divisional managers, the engineers, the superintendents, the supervisors, they all work together in creating the requests for the upcoming year. This is not just, you know, somebody putting something down on a piece of paper. It's prioritized, boards and commissions look at it, and that's what they present to the town manager for consideration. So this is how we rank our projects. In priority order is health and safety concerns, whether or not we need to meet federal and state or legal obligations, whether we have to secure outside funding opportunities to reduce the tax need, that ranks a high priority, affordability obviously, and preservation of infrastructure and assets, and identification of available resources, and the impact of potential deferral on proposed projects. This is just telling you what types of revenues that we use to fund our projects, and these are the other types of funding sources outside of property tax support where we discuss the fair share development, school housing aid, real estate conveyance tax. All of those other funding sources are incorporated into this budget to take care of these projects. If you go to the next, okay, so this, this is, oh, I can't see it very well, but this is, these are all of the types of funding sources that we have defined, and we have some undefined funding sources. This project, this six-year plan is a $95 million budget. Just want to get you to that, that particular slide is important here, and it's in the long-term section. Sorry, it's the debt section, tab 3-7. Eight and, it's, oh, 8 and 9, 7, 8, and 9. So this is, this is what's important here, because these revenues are what's driving this budget. So you'll, if you look on page 3-9, the six-year proposed plan is a $95 million plan. Within that plan, we are, we are anticipating $81 million in bonds. We have undefined revenue sources. Do you have that, Rob? Of $480,000. We have secured and available funds to use, and these are funds that we have available in our capital projects, special revenue funds of $202,000. Future CIP, that's a pay-as-you-go. We're looking at $6.9 million over the six-year plan. Funds from fund balance and operating transfers of $5.8 million, and revenues associated with impact fees and open space of $450,000. So this is how, this is the plan that we're using, these are the funding sources that we're using for this $95 million six-year capital plan. And you can see by this, last year's budget was $19.799.
And remember, of that, 80 million, 81?
It's 80, yeah. It's $76 million of bond authorization associated with the school bonds. But of that, we also have, right now that we plan on issuing, $4 million already been approved. It has not been issued yet, but that's also being incorporated into the financing section and the debt schedules.
And this has a $500,000 bond for road improvements?
Yes, and so in addition to the $76 million, we are also hoping for a $500,000 public works improvement budget for roads.
So it's the 76 plus the $4 million that's already authorized for the schools, plus $500,000 for?
Road improvements and a million dollars for neighborhood guild improvements, which we will discuss the long-term projects when the departments come up to speak.
So of that $95 million six-year program, $81 million have just been described. That's the meat of it, the big bulk of that 90.
So when we developed the 2000, this is important, when we developed the 2020 pay-go section of the budget, the initial request came in at $300,000 higher than the prior year. And when we look at our capacity to tax, our max levy is 4% of the tax levy. So we currently have $72 million in taxes. We can only raise to a max 4%, which is $2.9 million. We felt that internally, we felt the $300,000 was too high to go up, so what we did is we asked the department heads to go back with their staff to look at their current request and to level fund it to the prior year. So they did some reprioritizing of their projects, and they level funded the 2020 budget. The only, the only program we couldn't level fund was the property revale. So that's the $101,000. We are up $101,500 from the prior year, and that's due to property revale. And the reason for that is we had reserve funds in prior years that we've been using to do our statistical revales, which happen every three years. Of the statistical revales, we get 60% reimbursed by the state. But what we don't get reimbursed by the state is the full revale, and we will be having a full revale in 2021. That revale is expected to cost us $509,000. So it's time now that we start setting aside money to plan for that full revaluation in 2021, and that's the increase of the $100,000.
Again, well, that's a big number. It's not the $500,000 spike. We're planning toward it.
Rob explained that tab one is the introduction section and covers all the demographics, the statisticals. If you'd like to take a look at that, you have any questions, it talks about employment, unemployment, it talks about population. There's an interesting chart in the population where you can see the trends in population and how it's gone down significantly in the school-aged children and grown significantly in the population of age 60 and over. But if you'd like to speak to that, we can talk about that if you'd like.
I would underscore that Trish's point is exactly right. I mean, the demographic history of the community over the last 10 or more years is that the student population is declining, but the general population is growing. We don't grow very quickly, but we've been growing steadily in terms of total population, and the fastest-growing portion of our population are the over-65 population. That is, without a doubt, the demographic summary of the community.
This is a chart that's showing you the, a five-year history on our property tax levy. So the five-year average is 1.57%, but you'll note that last year our increase was 2.4%. And prior to that, the year prior to that was 0.57%. This is, we use a lot of benchmarks for the bond rating agencies when we evaluate where we are financially. This is a statistical profile that shows you our debt per capita. This is, this is a positive on the rating methodology score sheet with Moody's and S&amp;P. South Kingstown currently has a debt per capita of $325, but you'll note, I think the next slide, Rob, that we're going to go up to, this is projecting to go up to in 2025, $2,253. That's the gross debt per capita. So we're going to grow from $380 up to $2,253 if we stay with the plan that is currently being proposed.
Although, I just want to check that, that's the plan that was submitted in the stage one. We don't know what the current plan's cost is. We've not seen numbers associated with option A. The option B proposal, as submitted to RIDE as stage one, had a $76 million bond associated with it. The current project does not have a number associated with it yet.
So I think also what's important here when we talk about debt per capita, even though we have the ability to grow the debt per capita, we have room there and still stay on the positive methodology rating with the rating agencies, it's what's affordable. So I think that's where the public has to decide what's affordable.
Yeah, I mean, to use, to use a layman's expression, we qualify for a large bank loan. That doesn't mean we really want to live with a large bank loan.
So here is where I started to lay in debt service obligations. This is how we anticipate we're going to load in our debt. So what I've planned here with the, in particular with the school building improvements, I plan to phase that in over two years. So we're looking at, we're looking at issuing $38 million in July of 2020, and we're going to defer the principal on that. So the cost that you see in the column 2020 to 2021 is actually interest expense, because we do have the ability to defer principal two to five years. We don't typically do that, but the, the rating agencies do allow, allow that to happen. If we do that in the first issue, we will not be doing that in the second issue, but we will be issuing the second $38 million in 2022.
This is page 3-22, if you want to have a closer look at the numbers. And the rationale for this design, Trish, is, is that this is the way to maximize the, to optimize the $76 million bond and minimize the impact on taxpayers year by year during this period.
But what you'll see in this slide also is, once we start taking on that principal in fiscal year '23, you'll see how the state housing aid offsets that at the bottom. So once the principal hits, the housing aid will hit us at the same time, which will And also what we learned last week at the building committee meeting, although I've said 55% because that's what was told to us initially, evidently, we can only receive half of our eligible housing aid. So right now, we are currently eligible for 35%. In the bonuses, we can only get 50% of the 35%. So we're only eligible for 17.2% of bonuses.
Right.
So there's seven ways to get bonuses of 5%. Of those seven ways to get 5% bonuses, we're only eligible for 15.2%, sorry, 17.2%.
So the bottom line, based on our conversation with RIDE last week, is that South Kingstown can expect no more than 52.5% reimbursement from the state, and there is a reasonable possibility that we might only see 50% reimbursement. It is unlikely, based on the conversation with RIDE, that the reimbursement rate will be lower than 50%, but it's not going to be 55. It is impossible as a matter of statute for it to be 55.
This is the impact on the average homeowner. So currently, the debt service cost to the average homeowner, $88.05. In year 2025, that cost is going to go to $220.29, an increase of 132.24 over the six-year plan.
And we're, we're just talking about the average price?
That's the average homeowner, so in 2023, assuming a 1, 20, that should be 2024, 25, assuming a 1% growth in the values, that average home of $352,000 is going to grow to $374,000, assuming a 1%. The cost impact on the average homeowner at $374,000 is $220, just for debt service.
And to be clear, this is not, this is not a, over that period of time. This is the difference between year one and year six. This is the bill, in year one is $88, year, the bill, in year six, in each of those years it will be higher than 88, and it will be between 88 and 220. In year six, it'll be 220, and then it'll begin to reduce from 220 as we retire debt. But it won't go down quickly.
And we're talking 20, right, potentially, on the, on the large school debt potentially?
On the school debt portion of that that we're talking about, we're talking a 20-year bond?
Yeah, 20-year bonds, that's what I've built into the debt schedules, 20 years, conservatively at 4%. A neighboring town, which we use as a benchmark in Westerly, they issued bonds and they were 3.2, so should be somewhere around that.
Now, the 220, $220 in year six doesn't necessarily stay at 220 for the entire 20 years, because during that period of time, we will retire other debts. It's never, it's never going to come back down in that 20-year period. Well, it will near the end, but it's, it's not going to be at 88 again.
So this is, this is just a synopsis of the current year, the current adopted capital program and the proposed 2020 program. Obviously, the greatest change in that is the school program. Utilities, they're an enterprise fund, they don't receive any tax support or anything. They have a couple of programs which John will be speaking to later on. The increase in that is 2.1. There's a water metering program and another program, but overall, the largest increase of this is the school bond program.
I will point out as well that this table does not reflect the 3% capital improvements that will, the 3% set aside for capital maintenance and improvements that the state's going to require of the school department going forward. That program has not yet been built out, so it's not.
Well, that, that will be in their operating budget. What this also, this also points out, a new program, which Lance will speak to, is a townwide radio program, and we're going to be going from the 800 megahertz to the 400 megahertz. We, we bid out for a consultant, we're currently reviewing those, those proposals, but that's where the increase of the $959,000 is coming from, from the general municipal. That's in the public safety program. We've estimated that project to be $886,000. That program, you'll see within the details of the budget, we're looking at funding that similar to the way that we funded the street lighting program, where we used surplus dollars at the end of the year and set them aside to pay for this project in the future. So it's not $886,000 at once. We're planning for this, again, a planning document. We're proposing to move surplus funds to a reserve account to take care of that project. Lance will speak to that in a minute. So here's the pay-go section of the budget. The general fund budget, as I had indicated, is up $101,500, driven by the property revale. The neighborhood guild fund, that is the improvements that we'll be looking at doing over the next year. A decrease in the water enterprise fund. On the school operating, the school pay-go section is increasing from $445,000 to $512,000. But again, that is a piece of their operating budget, that you will speak to them when you discuss their operating budget. That is not part of the capital budget, but we present it here just for information purposes. These are our long-term programs, and the departments are here to speak on behalf of Yeah, these are all, these are all our planned initiatives, the water meter, like I spoke to, Kingston Forest main replacement. Here's the cost of the annual funding and the long-term range program elements. So the total capital program went from six-year plan, $39 million, up to $111 million, which we can see the driver, minus the pay-as-you-go, so minus your annual appropriation. The net of that is a $32 million program in 2019, up to $104 million for 2020. So these are some of the major projects that we spoke about in the document. One is the radio project, which I had discussed briefly, the Mattoonik Beach Road project, which John will touch on, and the off-site solar project. These are the projects that we have slated for bonds. You'll note that the neighborhood guild bond was approved in 2006. The $4 million school building bond was approved in 2014. The road and bridge improvements of $500,000, and the two building improvement bonds, well, it's actually one bond, but we are potentially going to the referendum in November of 2019 for approval. Fair share development fees, as you know, we suspended the program for educational facilities on July 1st of 2017 due to decrease in enrollment. There's no need for new school buildings. And fair share development fees for recreation, we have slated them for suspension on July 1st of 2020. Open space acquisition program, over the last 18 years, there's been 31 projects, a total of 1,621 acres of town-owned open space. July of 2018, we purchased the Boy Scout property, that's 11,000 acres. We currently own 32,000 open-space land in South Kingstown, and over the past two decades, we've spent more than $8 million on open space. And over the past two decades, we've spent more than $8 million on open space. We're just going to turn, we're going to turn it all over to the department directors who've put their long-term and their pay-go sections together. But does anybody have any questions about any of the debt, long-term, school bonds?
I got you.
At this point?
Um, just, so, the school committee might be looking at changing that plan within the next week or something. Are we going to be able to have, I mean, they shouldn't have any impact on this current year capital improvement plan anyway, so...
It won't have any impact on 2020. Those are the outer years. I, I think, I think it was important to build it. There was a little bit of discussion whether we include it or not. I felt that the information was there. It's public. We should be building it into this plan, because that is going to impact us in the future years. So, I think people need to understand the implication of those decisions. That's why I included it in this year's budget.
But again, Trish's main point at the beginning, this is a plan beyond year one. In year one, it's an actual budget. We are committing the money this year for the items identified. In terms of the stuff in the fifth, uh, second, third, fourth, and fifth year out beyond this, this current year, it's a plan, and it will have to change. There's, there's no doubt, $76 million is not the right number anymore. A different number will have to be put into the, into the plan.
Uh, it looks like this program is really built under the assumption that the bond referendum is going to pass. Do we have a lot of confidence that that will happen on a special election next November? Because, you know, voter turnout is typically down during a special election. We would really have to market this to get the people out there.
Again, this is a plan, and we build in the, the information and the components that we know about. If it isn't funded, then it comes out of the plan, and it goes away. The components that are pay-as-you-go and the components that are reserve funding for future programs will not be affected by whatever happens at a bond referendum. The main program, if you will, chugs along, and the referendum projects live or die by the vote of the voters.
But it's important information for people to see, and it's all here. It's all in the document. You can see the change in the debt schedule obligations, so...
I, I fully support the decision Trish made to actually do this math around that project as submitted. By the way, this is, this reflects what the town has told the state we intend to do. This is not, these are not numbers that were invented. They're solid numbers based on an application submitted to the state. They, doing the, the math around that has given us a sense of how affordable the project is, and I think that's important for us to know.
I'm not trying to dispute the figures. I just figure a $76 million-plus bond issuance ask from the voters is a lot. So, building this around that assumption is the only reason I asked the question. But, but I, but I do understand it is relevant, it's important. We've, we've built everything around it up to this point. I just wanted to raise that question.
And in Trish's defense, she built it around the number, the only number she had from the bodies that were authorized to make a decision at that point, and, and this was what was coming from the school committee's vote. $76 million was the implied cost for the project that was approved by the school committee in, I believe it was June, might have been May, but last year, and what we submitted to the state of Rhode Island as our intention.
And Rory, just so you know, tomorrow morning, we'll get some more solid numbers on their cost estimator, and the building committee will then go through those numbers and try to come up with a, a plan, a way to make it happen. And then we're also going to be looking at things that we don't need, that are currently in that Jacobs report at the present time.
Trish, and Rob, I'm frankly, I'm glad that you put it in there. I think the sooner that we realize the impacts of our decisions, the better, because the public needs to know. The public needs to really wrap their head around, we've never carried this kind of debt. So, the public really needs to wrap their head around what this means for the next 20 years.
Yeah, we talked about at the last building committee meeting, how, well, the one prior, how are we going to market this? So, I think that's what this is all about. It's about marketing, but not up to us to do the marketing, but it's up to us to present the dollars, the numbers.
Present the case, because some, some people will market against, so...
But Councilman, to your point about this level of debt relative to what the community has carried before, you're exactly right. We've never carried this level of debt. And in fact, in talking to Steve Alfred about it, this is probably about twice as much debt as we've ever carried. This is, this is a big ask. This is a big project to take on.
I just have one question about the neighborhood guild bond. That, that bond was never issued?
We have not issued that.
Approval is there, never issued?
Never issued.
Okay.
I hope folks know Mark Russo. Mark, have you had a chance to meet all of the members of council?
Brian and Deborah.
Turn that mic on.
I didn't want to, but okay. Oh, yeah, so I know Brian and Deborah from the school building committee, and I rent quite a few things from Joe for business, but never met Rory. Rory, I...
So, one of the things that we are learning from the school facilities exercise is that there really is a lot more to do around sort of planning for our facilities, our, our physical plants here on the, on the town side. This past summer, I asked Mark to step up and take on responsibility for sort of coordinating our thinking and our understanding, collect data, and, and start getting our heads, heads around the state of the entire inventory of non-school buildings, non-school structures here in town. It's actually a large number of structures. There's a lot of complexity to it. Not all of it is in Mark's custody and control, but Mark's job right now is to sort of get his hands dirty and figure out what's going on with our facilities. I've asked Mark to engage in the same exercise that the Jacobs engineering firm did for the state when they did the inventory for state schools, or all of the schools in the state, and that is to develop a baseline facilities condition index for each of our buildings, so that we understand where we are today and can monitor over time how our buildings are doing relative to one metric, relative to that one index number. So, Mark's begun that process. We're not far enough down the road to report on this, on that at this point, but I did want Mark to describe what he has learned, where we are in the process, and what the state of our inventory is as best he can. He does have two small projects in this capital improvement plan, one in the budget this, in the capital budget this year, and one that is slated to be funded two years out. Mark, it's up to you.
So, of this 127 structures you see in the second line, some of those are dugouts, batting cages, fencing, such and so forth, so that, no one really uses that as, they go inside. We don't heat it, we don't electrify it, so, and like Rob said, the majority are taken care of by the Public Services Department and the Recreation Department. And some of the important buildings there, of course, would be the wastewater treatment plant and, you know, rec center, some of the larger buildings that handle problems that come up, such as the wastewater. So, the, I have eight buildings that we manage, and this is the square footage. Comes up to 130,157 square feet. Each building has its own unique operation, whether it's steam heat versus hot water, or old lighting versus new lighting. I'll, I'll bring up the Kingston Free Library there, which is 244 years old, which is, has to be our oldest building in town. Yeah, it, it, it really is a, it's not a maintenance nightmare, but as long as we keep up with the, the exterior of the building, keeping the clapboards on, it's doing well, so...
Rumor has it George Washington drank there.
Oh, it was next door.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, there is quite a, a book there that gives the, the history of, they called it Little Rest at that point, and it covers that building quite a bit as far as the courthouse goes, who came there, and, and they were part of the ratification of the Constitution back when we had 13 colonies, so... As far as my staff goes, it's, it's myself. I have three full-time people and two part-time people. Of the full-time, I have one at the police station, who's there dedicated, one here at Town Hall, it's Andy, and then I have another full-timer who's a floater. He goes around to other buildings and services those, maintains them, cleans them, does whatever we need to get done there. The two part-time people, one is a part-timer for the library division only, so she takes care of the three libraries for us, and actually, I just got the resignation today from the other part-time person, so we'll have to fill that position at some point.
What was the other part-time person doing?
Uh, he was handling the adult daycare and when we needed imperdium in the libraries or Town Hall to cover for Andy when he's out or so forth, such as that, so... And this is the Town Hall improver program, which I took over after Jeff O'Hara retired last February, and the only two new things that are added on there are the bottom carpeting in the council chambers. As we just look around, we can tell it needs to be done, and to replace my pickup truck with a snowplow on it, but that's a two-year ask, so it's spread out over the next two fiscal years. I was going to bring that up for you, because I, I hear about that all the time. Yeah.
It's on the list, but as we pointed out, it's a plan, so things move up and down the list.
Yeah, so, that's where we stand.
Great. Any questions on the general state of, of our buildings, where we are in, in terms of maintenance and, and...
The only question that I have, I, I can't remember. The carpet replacement here is slated for this year coming?
It would be after 2020.
2020. I've said this before, that especially the older buildings that we have, I would be much more in favor of restoration than renovation, and I would be curious what's under these carpets and whether...
It's plywood.
It is, okay.
Never mind.
What's under the plywood?
I think it's wood floor.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Jaber, you're the next contestant. Come on down.
So, basically, we, basically, we should have two other systems, not already left, um, communications system, that's over the air, and I'm certain how much that's going to cost, but at least we have problems with the radio system being in the past, it's fairly looking out, and we're having difficulty back up, back up to that certain length of block, but basically, what we're trying to do is have a town-wide radio system where you can all be a part of that, and even conduct that alone, etc., on that radio system. So, I'm not sure, but we would like to have it working, and maybe one of the five options.
So, I want to pause there for a second, because that's a really important shift in, in the program or in the policy that's been pursued here in town. To this point in time, each of the fire districts have maintained their own communications equipment and systems. They've made purchasing decisions based on their individual needs, and the same is true for the police department, the same is true for the public works department or public services department, the same is true for EMS. What Lance has been charged with doing with this program is consolidating the buy, so that we're all buying the same types of equipment, so that we've got reserve if something breaks, and we can borrow from each other, and to design a system that meets the needs of all of the users, the fire districts, the police department, EMS, public works, and the schools, ultimately. It seems to us that there is an inefficiency involved when each of those various departments and districts have got their own systems and are buying things that meet their needs but don't necessarily interoperate or communicate with each other very well. Part of our challenge here is that the history of communications in town, and not just here, but many, many places, and not just Rhode Island, have been dictated by a desire to reach interoperability of communications by having the state come in and provide a one-size-fits-all solution that doesn't actually fit everybody, and therefore, folks drop off the system pretty quickly. We had that kind of effort here. Not everybody's in the state system. The police department in town is the only department that is still operating with the, the state 800-megahertz system. So, we've got to figure out how to get back to a shared frequency, one, and we should be moving toward shared purchasing, because there's an efficiency to be realized there, and shared operations. We shouldn't all be buying repeaters and this sort of thing independently. Whether that's going to work, whether we can pull that together, whether all of those myriad interests and needs can actually be addressed, is an open question, but it's, it's a question we have to answer, and I think ultimately, we're going to succeed.
All right, you've got the slide, sir.
Good evening. I know mostly all two of the new council members I've had a chance to meet, my name's Craig Stanley, I'm the director of EMS for South Kingstown. Our program, we have money, in our third year, I'll start with the top section, is to replace one of the transport units, paramedic number three. The ninety thousand is the last of three installments to replace that apparatus. The second is for thirteen thousand towards the replacement of cardiac monitors, which we've spread out over time. And this is the second payment for that, for the pay-as-you-go. The other twenty thousand for station improvements, for the south station, for potential expansion, and also included in that is for tile replacement for the north station, which is due for replacement. So, there's really not anything in our program that is out of the extra, most of it is to replace equipment that's aging. The only thing that we may see an increase is with the vehicles, is the state of Rhode Island has adopted standards that may increase the price due to meeting NFPA standards. I don't think it's going to be as dramatic as other people are saying. I think our target for what we want to spend is well within reach. And the other is equipment that has to be replaced, cardiac monitors. The ones we have now, we purchased in 2012, they generally have a four to six years lifespan. They've held up fairly well, but they're due to re-replacement, so we're placing those every year. We've had pretty good success with them, we've had a few, we've had to replace some parts that are no longer under warranty. But we try to keep the cardiac monitors working perfectly. And that's pretty much it for us, we're pretty consistent, there's nothing really, anything out of the norm, just maintaining what we have.
Thank you.
Lance, come on up.
Good evening. So, the twenty-five thousand, is that, this is just sort of already what was in the plan, not the eight hundred, it's not part of the eight hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just to keep us going while we build the larger system, or investigate building the larger system.
That's just radio replacements, this doesn't have anything to do with the eight hundred megahertz moving to the four hundred. The important piece of that project is for us to have immediate, correct me Lance if I'm wrong, contact with the schools. So we're looking potentially for school security funding with it, so I think Captain Nguyen Chau is working with the school department to see if there's any kind of school safety funding to help support that project.
Right, I mean, the project, the town-wide interoperability radio project is very early in the design phases. We've gone out and we've sought consultants who can help us design the tower placement, what we can do with the towers that are in town, et cetera. We have to choose the right equipment, the police department has been on this eight hundred megahertz system. They're finding that it's not serving their purposes, particularly in the southern part of town. They get down there and interference from pine trees actually keeps them from being able to talk to one another. Everybody else is on a four hundred megahertz system. Moving to the four hundred seems to be the right thing to do, but we have to investigate that. And then the question becomes, how do we pay for it? And Trish is correct, she's already looking into, you know, where are the pots of money that might apply? If we are improving school safety, it may be that we can look to state housing aid or some other resource for assistance there. But the bottom line is, interoperability, intercommunication is going to improve safety in the schools, it's going to improve safety on the fire grounds, it's going to improve safety for officers responding. We really, this is a big, important project for us to undertake. Lance has been, you know, sort of championing this project for a while, and he's doing just yeoman's work getting us there. But we're still very early in the process, we've got a lot of a lot of rungs on this ladder to climb before we're ready to actually present a full bona fide project to the council. The twenty-five thousand dollars here is simply money to keep the police department operating with their eight hundred radio system until we can get to a better one.
So maybe we'll see it more flushed out in next year's CIP?
You will see it more flushed out in next year's CIP, and I hope to be able to bring more news of this project to the council throughout the year, because we need to keep moving. We've got things going on with the towers and there may be opportunities for bringing in vendors, telecommunications vendors to do some stuff with us there. There's a lot of moving parts to this project, and I suspect the council will be hearing more about it throughout the year.
We just opened bids for a consultant for this project to help us with it, because it's internally, we don't really have the experience to manage this project, so we felt, as the committee felt, it was important for us to retain a consultant to help us with this project. Right now, we have, I think, eight, we have eight proposals, and we'll be reviewing them and scoring them and hopefully coming to you with a recommendation to retain the consultant. And then that consultant, it's different phases. We already have a, we already have some plans that the consultant will be charged with reviewing, taking a look at, seeing if that's viable for us, and whether we can use that and move forward, or the consultant will have to come up with a new plan. So, we do have a good process, we have a good plan. It's just, it's a big project that we don't have experience with.
It's a big project technically, and the consultant will help us there, but it's also a big project because institutionally, we're shifting relationships here. Lance and his division have not been sort of the go-to division on telecommunications, we're making them that. Hub to this wheel now, and there hasn't previously been that hub. We've got to build that institutional, you know, muscle as well, so. He's lean, he's mean, and he's able to get it done, but there's a lot between here and the top of the project.
And Lance has a project in there for Town Hall Garage that we keep zeroing out every year for us to manage our budgets. Can you talk about that, Lance? Because I think it's important for that Town Hall Garage outside.
And this is actually one of those projects that is why I think it's important for us to begin to be able to report to the council on the facilities townwide, regardless of who's got custody and control of them, because these projects do sort of just get pushed by the wayside, much like we saw school projects or school facilities being pushed by the wayside. We don't want to end up ten, fifteen years down the road, having pushed these projects off so long that they just never, they don't get done or they can't be done, because our facilities have been deteriorated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Lance.
Terry, come on up.
Good evening. So Trish went over most of the leisure services board view of what what our capital improvement program consists of. The first project on the list is our neighborhood guild improvement program. This has been in the capital improvement plans for twelve years now. During that time, we've shuffled priorities around to address issues that have come up over the past six or seven years, such as the replacement of our exterior staircase, the replacement of the ADA accessible lift that was replaced last year. So, we've invested funds already in some infrastructure improvements at the guild. That being said, there's plenty left to do, and I think it might be wishful thinking to think that a million dollars will cover the full extent of the infrastructure improvements needed at the guild. However, we have several elements to the program that you see in your capital program with regard to the main entrance alcove, which needs reconstruction. Window replacement and HVAC system, that's probably the largest piece of the project. Roof replacement, interior restoration, and then some pay-as-you-go pieces for the guild, including surveillance systems similar to what is at the rec center now, because we do have scenarios where we only have one or two staff people in the building during the evenings. And we could use, stand to have an elevated security system, surveillance system, and also a floor cleaning machine, just to improve our efficiencies surrounding building maintenance. We have gone out to RFP for a consultant to come in and actually do a comprehensive assessment of the structural integrity of the guild, and to prioritize for us what are the most important elements that need to be addressed right away. So what I would say is, for this capital plan, is that the time is now. We've done what we can with what we have. The guild fund is self-sustaining in that we do not pull from tax dollars as of this time. Anything that's been done at the guild has been paid for through the trust, the Guild Trust Fund, and it's the intention that with this bond, the debt service will be paid in that manner as well. I've had conversations with Trish regarding the fund and the fund balance, because certainly, we need to have enough in the fund balance to to spread out the debt service over a number of years, and that hasn't been done. I think the debt service was paid off on the last infrastructure improvements at the guild in three or four years ago? Oh, only 2017, so. Overall, the guild improvements, capital six-year program is one million fifty-five thousand dollars, including the couple of pay-as-you-go components. Any questions?
I just have a question, Terry, about the window replacement program. In the same vein, are we looking for restoration or replacement of period-type windows, or?
So, that's a good question, Joe, and that's one of the reasons we're really seeking consulting assistance with that. Some of the windows in the guild are not the original windows, and there have been bits and pieces of work done over the years that some of, the building, obviously, there's major significance with that building in town. And we want to make sure that we can maintain it and continue to use it for its original purpose. Those are the types of things that potentially, there's funding that could help us if there's historical restoration grant funds and that type of thing that we would look at. But I'm, I couldn't tell you at this point whether or not that's.
Yeah, and I guess my point is, especially if the trust is going to pay this, and it's not actually taxpayer dollars, and we could pull off restoration, renovation, that would be my preference, but.
Right.
Anyway, just.
Thank you. No, I think that would be a wonderful thing. Any other questions on the guild? Moving on to the Marina Park Improvement Project. This project has also been incremental in terms of what has been done over the past few years at the park. Most recently, we had repairs done to the dock last summer. That was more of an emergency repair, so to speak, the dock still could use replacement. But in the long term, the one element that remains necessary is a rehab of the boat ramp, or the reconstruction of the boat ramp. It's a public boat ramp, it's, within the past five or six years, Marina Park has kind of gone through a resurgence in terms of activity level, because of the public boat ramp, because there's free parking, because there's businesses in the Marina Park Special Management District that attract the public, which is all a very good thing, sometimes a double-edged sword in terms of the capacity for the public to park and recreate and also utilize the businesses. I think the replacement or the reconstruction of the boat ramp will be the, it's never a final piece, but the final piece of this particular project to upgrading that area. Certainly, it will attract more people, once that ramp is in better condition, we're going to see the need for revisiting parking, and how do we manage that going forward? But we've got funding proposed over the six-year term, which is really only a two-year term, because I've got fifty thousand in nineteen twenty and sixty thousand in 2021. I wanted to front-load that funding, simply because this has been in the pipeline for a long time as well, and what the Waterfront Advisory Commission is very interested in seeing that this element get completed, and so I'd like to try to maintain this schedule so that we can get that project done in 2021, 22. And that's primarily it for Marina Park.
So Terry, your narrative on the boat ramp project indicates that we're looking to DEM for possible funding, grant funding. Any luck there, or any?
Not at this point, but I have had discussions with our harbor master to look into that, fish and wildlife potentially, for funding, grant-related funding that we might be able to access. And to your point, Joe, in any of these long-term projects, we seek to find alternative funding to escalate the timetable on them. We did that with the West Kingston Park Playground Project. Wherever we can shift funding, we will, and take on what we can and take advantage of what other dollars there are out there. Welcome. Next, we have the Town Beach Long-Term Program. This is a challenging one, simply because we never know from year to year what the beach is going to look like after the winter. What I will say is that over the past six or seven years, the town has been as proactive as we could be, and somewhat reactive because of storms that have come in, but in terms of being able to secure funding for moving the pavilion and of being able to secure funding for moving the pavilion and installing a new onsite wastewater treatment system, we've done that. We've taken advantage of funding through FEMA to accomplish that. The broader issue with the beach, obviously, is just the general coastal erosion. That obviously goes way beyond our small quarter of a mile of shoreline. What's in our six-year plan is funding to annually address moderate erosion, to add sand at the beginning of every beach season for some replenishment. We're doing this year, we've got funding in the current budget to improve the pavilion, new doors, upgrades to the restrooms, and we've got some funding also in the six-year plan for a playground upgrade and possibly relocation, depending on how that looks in 2022. So we will continue to monitor the beach and the condition on an annual basis and look at the broader picture with CRMC, with our planning department, with the state, with the federal government. It's all the same problem, and what we need to be prepared for is when there's the potential for no beach and how we look at converting that property into or maintaining it as a park of some sort, in a recreational facility. Any questions on the beach? Next, we have Old Mountain Field. We put the Old Mountain Field Long-Term Program in the capital budget a couple of years ago to really address the need for a new restroom and concession building. So as you all know, Old Mountain Field is the most active community park in town. It's continually kind of evolving based on the needs of our community. Most recently, there has been the addition of a bowl in the skate park, and that is due to grassroots efforts of a community group that's helped fund that. We've had different groups that have contributed to improving parks around the town. It's been very helpful when we can't, we just, there's not enough money to go around to get everything we want done. This restroom concession building piece is really necessary. What I'd like to be able to see is rather than a six-year program that puts us out to 2025, that we look for alternative funding and try to move this project ahead sooner because the need is there. The bathrooms are operational, but if you've been to Old Mountain Field on a busy night when there's a baseball game and a, you know, tennis and basketball and skate park, it's just, it's impossible to keep up. So we know the need is there, the rec commission is very supportive, obviously, of moving forward with this particular project. In the current year, we have a $20,000 allocation for a park master plan revision to have, again, have a landscape architect, someone with knowledge of park design, take a look at it and see or advise us what would be best in terms of how we move forward with this type of project. Also, in the 1920 year, we have baseball field netting, $30,000 allocated for that. If you've been to any of the baseball games, you know that retrieving foul balls is like the biggest activity besides actually watching the game, but unfortunately, there's a danger and a risk there in terms of foul balls that are not pop flies but line drives, and that can be dangerous. And with the collegiate-level baseball that we have at the park, that's something that we have to address. And so we've got $30,000 in for netting that expands from the backstop to the edge of each dugout. Certainly doesn't cover the whole area, but it'll protect those closest to the action.
Terry, any plans for upgrades in terms of seating at Old Mountain?
We currently have, as you know, because I think you guys had to approve that purchase of the bleacher system that was demolished when a tree fell on it over the summer, we have that being replaced. The seating is something that we would look to the consultant to kind of weigh in on in terms of looking at the broader picture of the park design. Certainly, a six-year total of $475,000 isn't going to capture that, but certainly, you know, there's a pie in the sky kind of look at what we could do at Old Mountain Field because we have seen the additional draw of higher-level baseball and the draw of a skate park and those types of things. So it's certainly something that will be on the request for recommendation of design for a master plan. Any other questions on Old Mountain? So in terms of the pay-as-you-go projects, some of them I've already mentioned within the six-year projects, so I'll just go over these relatively quickly. Broad Rock Playfields, let me just see if we have these in, okay. So Broad Rock Playfields Netting System, that I believe is on 5-3 in the capital plan if I've got the latest version printed out here. Again, it's the same system as Old Mountain Field. The baseball field is adjacent to the dog park, and foul balls are regularly flying into the dog park, and we have signs up that ask the users of the dog park to be aware, but what we'd like to be able to do is install a netting system on the side of the field, the right field side that's adjacent to the dog park, to minimize the risk there. Brusso Park, we have $12,000 budgeted for crack ceiling and painting of the resurfacing of the tennis courts in Brusso Park. The last time those were done, I believe, was in 2002, and you can see by the photos that it's in need of some TLC. So we've got $12,000 budgeted for that. Marina Park, I went over that, $50,000 this year, and then $60,000 I have in, excuse me, not this year, 1920, and then $60,000 in 2021 to really focus on the ramp. Old Mountain Field, we've been through those, and the Town Beach, we have $10,000 for sand replenishment or erosion control.
Terry, when it comes to the Town Beach, if you could remind me, the fees that we collect, do they go back into the Town Beach?
The Town Beach is self-sustaining for the most part. We don't necessarily include our park maintenance piece of that, but in terms of staffing through the summer months, supplies, utilities, that's been self-sustaining for as long as I've been here. So that's always our goal, and we hope to continue that. And then we have for, are we moving on to equipment acquisition or senior services? Equipment, okay. So for our equipment acquisition, we have four different pieces that we're proposing be replaced. The first one is a multi-use gator. We use that on the Town Beach, on the bike path, on the baseball fields. It gets heavily used. We've got $15,000 budgeted for the replacement of a 2013 multi-use vehicle. So when it's used on the Town Beach, it's exposed to lots of salt and sea air and sand, and it takes a beating, so we're looking to budget to replace the gator. We've also got $50,000 budgeted for a tractor slash backhoe, and that will replace a 1999 tractor, so it doesn't owe us a thing. And our Parks Crew obviously uses this for any number of projects and regular maintenance at the various parks and town facilities. We've used it for seaweed removal, clearing of limbs and brush, snow removal, demolition, those types of things for various park projects. And we are also budgeting $30,000 for a, the first of a two-year funding cycle for a 12-foot mower. Again, this is a standard, you know, piece of equipment that's used on a daily basis in the parks and at town facilities, and that will replace a 2012 John Deere mower. And then we are also budgeting $24,000 for a front mount mower. It'll replace a 2010 John Deere machine, and this is a daily, this is a piece of equipment that is used daily. I do have, our Parks Superintendent Rex Everly is here. If you have any specific questions on the equipment, I don't pretend to know everything about the equipment. I can tell you that our Parks Staff does maintain the equipment, and we balance a fine line between when to replace so that there's still some trade-in value on the equipment so that we're trying to get the most bang for our buck. And if it appears that we don't need to spend the money in that particular year, we'll wait a year and hold that in reserve and use it at a later date.
Terry, and the total price on the front mount mower is what, do you know, total cost?
For the front mount with, if there were a trade-in allowed?
No, the 24 is the...
$24,000, yes, that's correct.
That's the full cost.
We're assuming a bit, you know, something for trade-in, but... And then I'll call Sue Demasi up. She's our Director of Senior Services, in case there are any...
What do you think?
We own in the right order?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I think you all know, Sue. Susan's our Director of Senior Services. So what we can do here is just run through the senior program quickly. One thing I would point out with the senior services program, the capital program, is that it is rolled into the operational budget so that when it is funded, we share services with other towns. So in that regard, we do get some contribution from the town in Arrogantit as part of their overall contribution to the senior services program, and I think that's good for both communities. So if we start out, we have our Adult Day Services Program, and I think most of you, well, let me just give you a little description. Our Adult Day Program services approximately 20 clients a day, memory impairment, Alzheimer's, early onset dementia, some physical limitations, and it's basically folks who cannot be home alone. And so our day care program offers that safe environment with structured activity, and it allows caregivers the time to work or have some respite. So for the 2019-20 year, we are proposing $20,000 for rehab of the Adult Day front entrance portico, and with that, that's a second of two funding allotments. If you drive by the daycare on Post Road, you see an extended portico. It's in rough shape, and so we're looking to be able to replace that in 2019, 2020. We also have received a $70,000 CDBG grant, which was received this year, and that is for improvements to other components of the building. And Sue, help me out in the, we have roofing...
Roofing, windows, bulkhead. It was originally asked for 100, so we have to break it down a little bit because we got 70. New flooring in the kitchen, new countertops in the kitchen, new flooring in the hallway, and hopefully the dining room area of the Adult Day.
So we're fortunate in that we're able to, this is another one of these pieces that we're able to have funding from a different source outside of tax dollars to be able to improve the facility. The senior center facility improvements, we have funding proposed, we had originally proposed $11,000 for replacement of the facility's hot water heater. In the meantime, we had to have it replaced before then. So that, this was put in before we knew we were going to need to have it replaced. So one way or another, the funding's already been established. We also have HVAC units that need regular maintenance, and we have a couple that still have yet to be replaced since the original units, since the building was constructed. So we've been maintaining some, we've been systematically replacing others. So that's part of the long-term budget as well. And then with senior transportation, we have been putting away funding for the past four years, I think now, in the amount of $10,000 increments to be able to purchase a new senior van when we need to. The van that we currently have is a 2012, and it's operating fine, but we need to be prepared as we look down the road. And we're also looking at our transportation program overall and some of the changes that we see that might come down the road, no pun intended, with regard to the type of vehicle we are looking for. Right now, we have an 18-passenger vehicle that's wheelchair-accessible. Typically, we do not fill the vehicle, but the van does travel to the kind of outer corners of the town and allows folks to be independent in terms of shopping and going to the senior center and not relying on loved ones or neighbors to have to take them places. We serve a small population, but it allows for those people to remain in our town and independent and not have to look, to move, to relocate. So for us, it's a very, and for the town, it's a very critical service. So we have funding set aside for the senior van. And you'll see on the six-year program that there are other facility improvements, general kind of pay-as-you-go things that we're looking at over the course of the six years. This year, we have ductwork in the pipeline for sanitizing. We've got things at the senior center like the siding. We did have the flat roof just replaced this year. We had funding put aside for that, so that was important. And over the course of the six-year program, including the CDBG grant, we're looking at a $300,000 program. Did I forget anything, Sue? And I think that does it for Leisure Services, unless you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Well done. Thanks. Before we bring John up, I think we're going to bring Lori Fox. Is Lori, there she is. We don't have a slide for Lori, but Lori can paint a picture.
Lori Fox, IT Director for the Town of South Kingston. We have, in the FY '20 year, asked for $15,000 to upgrade our email system. So the email system encompasses the town, the police, EMS, library services. One of the things we're looking at doing with that program that's currently housed within our building here is to potentially move it to the cloud. So it's something we investigated when we originally purchased our email system. At the time, the gap between what it would cost to be internally versus in the cloud was just too much money to be in the cloud. It didn't make sense. We could do it much cheaper in-house, so we went that route. Now, as more and more things are starting to move to the cloud and the pricing between what it costs to have in-house versus the cloud... what it costs to have in-house versus the cloud is starting to get a little closer cost-wise, we're investigating that again. The, this, being in the cloud would allow us to remove some other appliances that we have that do spam filtering, archiving of our email. Per state law, we have to archive email. It's available for e-discovery and so forth, so we're meeting those requirements. But again, we're looking to go to the cloud for that. So one of the important things that I wanted the council to know is we're examining some of our other systems as well to potentially move to the cloud. And by doing that, it relieves some of the CIP dollars that IT would ask for, but it would increase our annual operating at that point. Going in, going cloud-based for email or other systems would also give us basically 24/7 access in the event of a disaster. So if something were to happen and we needed access to get a payroll system out, to pull information and documents, if it's in the cloud, it's available if Trish had to work remotely, or if the manager needed to work remotely, or anyone else. More of our workforce is becoming mobile. We're starting to, as you notice, I think Terry had her new laptop up here that she's very excited about. So more and more of our folks are becoming mobile.
So she can work from home more.
There you go.
Yeah, well...
It's a method to our madness.
It's, it's very convenient when something happens. I can tell you, New Year's morning, I got a call from the police department because they were having a problem with something. And it's nice to be able to do things from home, just jump up, grab your laptop, fix whatever the issue is, and then roll over and go back to bed. But it's important to know that as we migrate, the capital dollars for IT is, is going to come down. But you will see us probably looking to increase some of our operating expenses, so...
We currently have 15 servers on a five-year cycle. That will go down, will go down to what, two? Because you have the police department and...
Well, the 15 servers doesn't include the police department.
Right.
That's, that's Town Hall. So the police is a, is a separate entity that the chief had mentioned we were asking for separate funding. And, and per federal law enforcement regulations, we have to keep our police department data and infrastructure separate. But the 15 servers that we currently have, as we start to migrate things out, will probably go down to, I would say, three, maybe four, so that staff can still log in and gain access to shared resources. But over the years, we've, we've consolidated things. We had a number of servers out at different locations that we've brought all into Town Hall and, and virtualized those as well to, to reduce electricity and cooling costs and things like that.
What that does for us is it improves accessibility to the, the resources. It reduces the capital costs, obviously, on our side. It does, however, expose us to market forces that we're not currently exposed to. So as, as cloud computing goes down in price, we enjoy the benefits of, of its going down in price. As the market changes and, and industry changes what it's offering, or the price structure changes, I've been completely frustrated by, and I'll say it publicly, Adobe and their pricing schedule over the last few years has, in my view, gone the wrong way if, if you're a consumer. We do subject ourselves to that. So it's, it's, it's an important decision we're making here. The council should be aware that it, it has some real benefits, and we're weighing the potential downsides as well.
Yeah, so before we migrate to anything, we tend to look at what it would cost if we do it in-house versus if we do it in the cloud. And as I mentioned, the last time we worked with updating our email infrastructure, that's what we looked at. It was much cheaper to do it in-house than it was to do in the cloud. But as I mentioned, those costs are starting to become closer now. And actually, we're starting to see, I mean, Microsoft is starting to say that email-based on-premise is going to go away. They haven't come out and said that exactly, but they're starting to lean that way because their pricing model has come down considerably. And I think it was either last year or the year before, the school district moved to the cloud as well for, for their email. And it was something we kind of talked about at that point, the IT staffs.
Anything else?
I hope you're all using your town email now?
Yes.
Okay? Thank you.
Now, before jumping to John and the big items, I'd like Jean to come up and, and describe his, his, excuse me, revaluation program and what is going on there. That's the $100,000 that we cannot avoid in this, in this capital budget.
... What are the final statements of 2012's full evaluation? Trish has already discussed the anticipated cost of the 2012 one full evaluation, and now one for a statistical evaluation. State law requires revaluations to conduct within three years. There are nine years of full evaluation, and then after that, there are three statistical evaluations. Full evaluations require a town hall, town property to be inspected. There is not any state university that would do that. The intent of statistical evaluation is to evaluate the property, so the evaluation here, those properties are basically based on market conditions that exist during the evaluation here. Those statistical evaluations see 60% of the university state. As far as the 2018 evaluation, during the 2017, '18 market, particularly low-cost market, so we would see a lot of increases in most categories of properties. We would send out assessment processes in the second week of February. Most of the people have completely switched to the mailroom, or we'd be evaluating all. Right now, I think that residential, most of the property that we have, probably have increased, the level of recall, 15%, which is quite a bit, but how many of these have experienced statewide? That includes new construction, which can destroy a lot of it. You have a lot of projects in town that are pretty active. So, we set up a whole system in February. The evaluation of the year in feels in March. After that, feels can be directed to the assessment boards in July, and that's what we want. Assessments continually appealed to the assessment board to review and all that. By the time we go through that whole process, we've pretty much resolved any assessment issues. But it is a process in public. You ensure that each level of appeal is hard to sustain, and we try to resolve any issues that may occur. That's pretty much about it as far as the evaluations. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. All right. John, you want to come on up?
So, Public Works, Rick, we consist of all road infrastructure, dams, bridges that are town-owned, and stormwater, and TMDL implementation. In addition, we also have our three enterprise funds, water, wastewater, and solid waste. So this, this slide here is representative of the spreadsheet on, let's see, 4-21 of the manager's budget. So the bottom of that spreadsheet is, reflects what the income is over the six-year period. And the expenditure for the same six-year period is broken out by component arterial roads, collector roads, local roads, stormwater, bridge and dams, and highway facilities. So the first thing we'll look at is the Highway Division, Public Works equipment for the upcoming fiscal year. We have a dump truck, a medium dump truck. We have 22 plow routes and 11 sanding routes. Eleven sanding routes are all with dump trucks that are CDL, so this is for a replacement truck, $185,000. Unfortunately, with the, with the dump truck fleet, other than hauling sweeping spoils to the landfill and whenever we need materials for construction projects, they're primarily used for storm removal. And because of the salt, which is highly corrosive, the fleet doesn't have a whole lot of miles, they're not 300,000, 400,000 mile vehicles, they're 60, 80,000. It's, it's the corrosion that's the issue from the, the salt. Although we pressure wash them after every storm, it's just, we all know what it does to our cars, we have the same problem with the trucks. The next item is an arborist truck. We've had a number of claims in the, it seems like it's on the rise. I think at one of the recent council meetings, we spoke about National Grid just got done taking down, I think it was somewhere in the order of about 40 trees that were threats to their utilities. We've, we've got to step up and be more aggressive. We're trying to manage the canopy, especially the lower canopy, that the top of the canopy that gets the sun doesn't get compromised, but the lower branches that don't get the sun, that's where we see some of the die-off. So what we're proposing for the upcoming fiscal year is a, a truck that'll be able to manage the lower canopy up to 50 feet. And then lastly, payloader, it's a very expensive piece of equipment. I believe it's going to be a four-year funded, this is the second year, to replace a 2006 payloader that currently has $4,400 hours on it. That piece of equipment's primarily used during the winter months to load the dump trucks with sand and salt mixture for the winter storms. Any questions on highway equipment?
John, just one question. The question sometimes comes up about what's the difference between arborists' truck and a, and a regular bucket truck, and it might be helpful just to describe...
So, so an arborist truck, you've probably seen the, the crews out trimming for National Grid, they have a hydraulic takeoffs up to the bucket, so we use instead of, you know, with a power chainsaw, they're hydraulic provision, so we can have a pole saw to trim with. The trucks also have a box in the back, so we chip right into the box. We can dump with that box if any of the, the chip debris versus like what Lance has, doesn't have the, the box in the back for, for chip material. Water division, we've got three items for the upcoming year. Actually, we have a little typo in the, in the, this starts on page 5-31 of the manager's budget. So we have $53,000 for exterior power washing of both Victoria and Mortucket water tanks. Both of those tanks were encapsulated and, and sandblasted down to white metal and then recoded with a two-part polyurethane paint system. The prior system was lead-based paint. For whatever reason, mildew doesn't like growing on lead-based paint, it doesn't like growing on polyethylene-based paint. So ever since we repainted those, we've now find that we have to pressure wash the exterior every two years. So we're up again to do it the fall of 2019. Surprisingly, Victoria's $40,000 just to pressure wash the exterior. Mortucket's about 15,000, 13,000. The reason is Victoria is, at least from the pressure washing contract that we've used in the past, is the highest tank that he's done nationwide. So that tank has a very high base-to-top elevation, which requires specialized equipment to get up to, to pressure wash that tank.
An arborist truck.
Yeah, I wish, we'd get the bottom cone done, that'd be about it with the arborist truck. Water main replacement, we just, it's an annual stipend that we reserve every year in the event that we have to replace water mains at some time in the future. Our water system, as compared to most water systems, is still relatively young. It was constructed in the, the mid to late 60s. It's mostly non-metallic pipe versus some of the older systems like Providence have cast iron or ductile pipe that are not lined, so they get a lot of tuberculosis inside the pipe. We're fortunate that we don't have that problem. But again, we want to start reserving money in the event that sometime we do have to do a water main replacement project. And we also, from the various funds, last year we had money from the wastewater division, this year it's for the water division. Again, reserve funding for any improvements to the public services building that we'll need in the future. Any questions on water? Wastewater, I guess let me stop by saying if, I don't know if you have page 5-33 of the manager's budget. The wastewater division is a regional system. South Kingston is the managing regional partner for the wastewater system. The regional treatment plant is located behind Marina Square in Aragansett. Of that facility, depending upon, we all have, it's metered, we have metered flow that comes from Aragansett, metered flow that comes from South Kingston and the University. Those are the three regional partners. So depending upon what the improvement is, if it's improvements to the treatment plant, those costs are apportioned to regional partner, both URI, South Kingston, and Aragansett. If it's to the Silver Lake Pump Station, Aragansett has no flow that goes through Silver Lake. That flow or any project cost to Silver Lake is apportioned to South Kingston and URI. And the same goes for Kingston Pump Station. So one example that Trish talked about is we have upcoming in the future year, a pretty expensive forcepsane replacement up at Kingston Pump Station. But because URI, their flow's about 87% of the flow through that pump station, the projected $2 million cost, 87% of that's going to be paid by URI. The balance will be paid by South Kingston. Same goes for Silver Lake, except the, the splits for Silver Lake are about 68% South Kingston, 32% URI. So we also are trying to finish up right now a pretty large engineering contract for a number of improvements at the treatment plant. I can go through all these if you'd like, that's up to the council. But many of these projects are going to be incorporated into that, that bid that's going to be coming out probably this spring, and it'll be a pretty lengthy and expensive project. Any questions on the wastewater? Do we want to talk about roads quick, because we didn't have a slide on that? I can talk about roads if you, hold on just a second.
What about Matunik Beach Road, John, and Sunset Solar?
Yeah, so we can talk, I'm looking here, so Matunik Beach Road, we finished up the boreings the first week of December. And we've got all the utility poles moved now to the north side of the road, so we're just trying to finish up the design now that the boreings are complete. And at that point, we'll be proceeding to CRMC with an application, hopefully sometime in January, for the next phase of the wall, which goes from the existing wall, Terminus on the west, to the Matunik Trailer Association property. The downside is we've applied for, I think, three federal grants, and we've been turned down on all of them. So the, the process to get the permit, the... So, the process to get the permit the last time was rather lengthy, I'm sure the council remembers that. So, we're going to continue with getting, hopefully, the permit in the set-in place, and at the same time, try to look at different funding sources. But funding could be, we, I'm hopeful we'll get the permit this time a little quicker since we've already gotten approval for Phase One of the wall, but funding could be the Solar project status, so, the Curcage onsite projects became operational in October. We're already starting to see some of the
Credits.
The credits, the energy credits coming to our utility bills. The off-site project, which is up in West Greenwich off of Route 102, I believe they got their final town approval late last calendar year. They're in for their environmental approvals now, and we're hoping that project will break ground sometime this spring and be commissioned, hopefully, by the end of calendar year 2019.
Maybe you want to talk about Silver Lake? And that goes back to reprioritizing our capital projects and the work that we do to move money around and defer projects for certain things. So, one of the things that just came up as recent is the Silver Lake Bridge.
So, Silver Lake kind of threw us a curveball, because we completely reconstructed that bridge back in '09. So, when Ride Dot called and said, you know, "You've got to close the bridge," I'm like, "Wait, you sure you're talking about the right bridge?" And of course, it was, it's had some deterioration since '09. So, we have received the design from the Ride End engineer, we solicited some quotes. The quotes are significantly higher than I thought, so we've gone back to Ride Dot's design engineer to see if some of the design provisions can be modified, to try to bring the cost down, so we're in that iterative process right now. So, we're hoping to wrap that up, hopefully, this week, and try to get a decision done by early next week.
And roads generally?
So, roads generally, the roads scheduled for next year, if you go to, let's see, it's on page 5-14. So, we've got Sand Turn Road, we actually had a portion of Sand Turn Road in, for the current year budget, we had to push that out to next year, because the price was, asphalt was up for the current fiscal year. So, we're looking to do all of Sand Turn Road from Route 138, I think it goes down to 100, I think it's 100 acre, or, I'm trying to think of the road to the north, it's another gravel road. So, that's in for next year. Sand Turn Road in its entirety. Old North Road, again, the only wrinkle we may have with Old North Road is, depending upon the timing, is that proposed subdivision project to the north. We don't want to reconstruct the road, only to have it destroyed by a project shortly thereafter, so we'll have to look at that from a timing standpoint. Again, that's going to be from 138 to Stony Fort Road. Moonstone Beach Road, from Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road to Cards Pond Road, that's scheduled for overlay as well for next year.
And this is the pay-go program, this is not contemplating any bonded funds?
Right, the bonds are slated, well, they have to be approved first, so they'll go to referendum in 2019 November, and I've accounted for them in the schedule of 2022. So, if you look on tab 4-21, you'll see pay-as-you-go transfers for the road improvement program for 2020 is $670,000. So, although the expense is $1,015,000, we're looking at pay-go funding of 670, plus an operating transfer of $100,000. So, we're hopeful for a mild winter, so that we can see some surplus dollars in the Public
So, the bond is scheduled for '21, '22.
John would tell you, if you gave him $1 million a year, he would use it.
I mean, that's, probably the biggest request we get is people, you know, we do a road, they say, "Well, how about my road?" Well, it's not intended for that, it's intended to fix the roads that are really bad, but everybody wants it looking like a brand-new road. So, you could give me $8 million a year, I could spend it on roads.
What do you anticipate the million-dollar bond would go to first?
Half a million, not a million.
Yeah, so, again, if you look at 2020, if you look at 21, '22, on page 4-20, so, again, the six-year schedule we have is predicated on the $500,000 bond in 2021, '22. So, if that fails, then we'd have to, at that point, readjust what, you know, the timing of the roads that are proposed for overlay.
Yeah, what the bond does is it accelerates getting to the list. The list is the list, and we can get to the roads on the list as fast as the money comes in. If we are relying on the pay-go program, obviously, we're balancing this against Old Mountain Field and everything else in the Capital Improvement Plan. If we have an infusion of bonded funds that lets us jump the list and get more of those roads done.
So, for example, we got that ARA funding back when President Obama was elected, which was unanticipated, that did Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road. So, you know, we'd be farther behind, I think we got 800,000, if my memory serves me right, so we'd be, you know, that much farther behind if we hadn't got that cash. So, not that I envision other money like that coming forward from the feds, but...
Every week is Infrastructure Week, you know, that's going to happen. Every year, we get approached by people who want us to make safety improvements, road safety improvements for pedestrians, cyclists. Is there any plan to identify funding for projects like that?
I'm not aware of any funding. I think there's always a push for sidewalks, and I guess my pitch for sidewalks is this, whenever sidewalks are contemplated, you first have to consider drainage, because when you put a sidewalk in with a vertical face curb, which is required to protect the pedestrian, now you're impounding the water on the side of the road. So, you first have to get the drainage in, and now with the stormwater requirements, you have to treat the stormwater. So, on a high level, we can get about a mile of road done overlaid for half a million dollars. High Street, which is about a mile, I think was about $8 million. Of course, there were sidewalks on both sides. So, maybe you're down to $5 million? If, you know, that would really and profoundly impact our ability to do pavement overlay if we were to start contemplating sidewalks on various projects.
I don't know if it's sidewalks so much as speed feedback signs, different striping patterns to do traffic calming, that's what we've heard, I think, from...
So, I mean, feedback, I don't think those feedback signs wouldn't meet the criteria for a capital project, that would have to be, come through the operating budget. I mean, my recommendation would be to have a more, I think we talked about this in the past, to have a comprehensive traffic calming study done that doesn't identify any specific road, but says if these roads meet this criteria, then X, Y, and Z may be appropriate types of traffic calming. I think you have to look at it as a town-wide initiative globally, rather than neighborhood by neighborhood. That's just my opinion.
I agree completely. Has the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee made any progress on...
Yes, I've met with them recently, it's now been before the holidays and a while ago. But, yeah, I think the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is a good forum for beginning to understand or develop sort of an expectation about what works town-wide or what could work town-wide. I think John's point about having a study done to help us set those criteria, bring a traffic expert in, a traffic safety expert in, to work with the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee and the community in general, as well as the police chief and the director of Public Services, makes sense. This is, this isn't quite the same as the radio project in terms of complexity, but there's a lot of nuance in traffic calming. And having somebody who does this as a regular part of a consultancy makes sense to me. Having somebody who can sort of step out of or isn't in the road-by-road analysis that we all, you know, get into when we're looking at it in our neighborhood, having somebody who can sort of be an objective observer and say, "You've got these sorts of problems, and these are the sorts of solutions that are typically applied to these sorts of problems," is helpful, I think. When we try to do it, you know, Middle Bridge versus Stony Fort versus 138, it becomes very hard to get away from the details of those specific problems. I think it is important for us to figure out how to do this in a general, generalized and robust way. We've got to come up with a set of solutions that can be applied across town. We have traffic problems across town, we have speeding problems across town, we have pedestrian safety problems across town. We really do have issues that have to be addressed. If we try to do it road-by-road, block-by-block, we're never going to get it done. I think that we need to have somebody working with us to say, "These, again, are the generic problems you've got, and these are the generic solutions that apply in these situations." Then we need to start setting priorities for where those generic solutions should be
John, when it comes to capital improvements, when we're talking about, you know those roads in town that look like public roads that people always use, but there's nothing that says it's a private road, but they're not maintained and they're deteriorating at a rapid rate? Any suggestions what we can do to address that problem?
Yes, I mean, we get those calls pretty frequently, and what I've told the property owners on those private roads are, if there's a community of interest amongst everyone as a property owner, you need to form some type of, you know, committee or HOA to maintain the road. Typically, what happens is the person who lives at the beginning of the road, unless they have a need to go to the end of the road, they say, "Why should I be paying for, you know, grading or paving down at the end?" But the person at the end of the road obviously has the most need to make sure the road all the way to his property is maintained. So, typically, what happens is it falls apart. Somebody, you know, this, Alder Road's an example down in Charleston. You know, somebody says, "I'm going to take care of this," and then they start talking to their neighbors, "Yeah, yeah," you know, half of them say they'll contribute, but by the time they come down and get the pricing and divide it by half, then it falls apart and nothing really gets done. But it really is a private property issue that we need to address.
Look, for instance, Alder Road, I think, half the road's in Charleston, is that?
Actually, the entire right-of-way is in Charleston. The frontage, those lots in South Kingston, the property line of those lots is the town line, so the shoulder of the road, the road itself, is entirely in Charleston.
I just want to give you one other example, say in Snug Harbor, I forget the name of the street, but you have a road that connects two other roads that people utilize all the time, and that's where I get, try to wrap my head around that in terms of, at some point, it was private, but they're used as, in my opinion, public.
But they're still privately owned.
Correct.
So, again, you know, whether you abut that road or you don't abut it, but you are part of the original plat, they may have rights and interests to cross and recross, even though they don't abut that portion of the road. So, you know, it's, title search would only probably be required to find out who has rights and interests, but there needs to be a community of interest from the people who get the benefit of that road if they want to keep it upgraded. It's happened elsewhere, but usually, the older roads, it kind of falls apart. We get the calls all the time.
Right, and I only bring it up because, like, for instance, the one I'm talking about in Snug Harbor, the reason why they've brought that up to me is they feel that it's a public safety issue for emergency vehicles, as an example, to be able to pass.
So, again, I tell those people, if you feel, if you feel it's a public safety issue, then you know you have a problem, it's incumbent upon you to try to solve it, not for the town to solve. I don't have money to take care of my roads, never mind private roads. So, we try to give them as much direction and help, but it is still a private property issue. Just as some of you has a long driveway up in the hills of Mattoonik, I mean, it may only service one house, but if, you know, if they're not maintaining it and the rescue needs to get there, they're kind of controlling their own destiny if it's a public safety issue.
In regard to the efforts to reduce speeds on certain roads where we see constituents kind of having concerns, I agree that we should look at it not from a road-by-road basis. However, I think we need to apply more urgency to the situation. I've talked to many people in Middle Bridge, around the corner there where it goes on at the bridge, some of those people are scared to come out of their house. People are speeding there, and it is a serious problem. And like I said, I agree, we can't go road-by-road, we do have to look at a more general way about it throughout town, but we need to show some more urgency. I've talked to people over there that have been fighting the issue for more than 10 years, so it is something we have to do, and I think we have to do it quickly.
All I can say is, it's every road in town, it's every town in the state, and it's every state in the country, it's a society problem, you're trying to change behavior. And my analogy is, I go to Newport Sunday nights, and I go over Newport Bridge, they got speed control signs each way, people, they don't slow down. I mean, even those speed feedback signs, people get immune to them. So, you're trying to correct, in my opinion, society problem, driving is the last thing on somebody's mind, I mean, they're on the cell phone, they're dealing with the kids in the backseat, I don't know what the answer is.
So, I've said it before, and I'll say it again publicly, it's not a popular thought. But what works is enforcement, and there are two ways to do traffic speed enforcement, either an officer on the ground or cameras. That's what works. That's what works. And it's a choice that we have to make. The trade-off is between an officer on the ground or funding for some other activity funded through the general fund or through the tax revenue that we collect. That's, we've not chosen to have officers on the ground doing this, we don't have enough officers to do this as it is. At any given point in time, on any day in South Kingston, we've got five officers out in the field covering the territory of South Kingston. We cannot do enforcement everywhere in town with that number of men or women.
Yeah, I get that, and I think you said, John, and I think you said, Rob, that maybe it's time to have some sort of a comprehensive study done that could give us some ideas for traffic calming, traffic adjusting habits. And that is not a capital project, so maybe we address it in the operational budget when we get to that.
These are all ultimately going to be operating expenses. Getting a consultant in is not a capital thing. Even the signs and signage, feedback signs and that, these things are all operating questions, they're not questions for a six-year, their life is just not that long. I mean, even the signs are not, are not capital items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, my rose, John.
All right, I do want to be clear, we're with you completely in the sentiment. We do not like to hear about accidents, we don't like to, you know, to have to go out to a scene where somebody's been injured or worse in an automobile accident. I would love nothing more than to be able to calm traffic throughout the town of South Kingston. It really is a shortage, a labor shortage or a technology problem. We're not going to solve this, John's exactly right, with roundabouts, we don't have the money to do roundabouts. We're not going to solve this problem with feedback loops, he's exactly right, the studies show they wear off, their effectiveness after time is diminished. We should have, you know, flashing signs in school zones, because heck, even if they don't do everything to improve traffic in everyone's mind, they make a difference. We should be doing that. But again, it's a trade-off, it's a question of where are we going to put the limited dollars that we have, and we've not put them there. We're happy to do that if the council directs.
Anybody else coming up to talk to us?
That's it for departments.
All right. All right. I guess that brings us to the end of our presentations tonight, and just to item number three on our agenda, which is other matters of interest and concern, which is simply public input on this capital improvement plan. If you have any comments to share, step up to the podium, say your name, identify where you're from.
Good evening, my name is Ken Burke, 28th South Glen Court. Once again, for the town of South Kingston, Rock, welcome, this is your first capital budget. Great job, I think you laid out perfectly in that, you know, Steve really set the template, the tempo for the town and continued that good fiduciary programming. I did want to make a couple of notes. Kudos to Terry Murphy in her presentation. I think she's the only one that really recognized or talked about external grant money. I'd encourage the town to strongly and critically look at the grant money that's available to South Kingston. There's a green economy bond that was passed. It does include funding for recreational facilities as well as bike lanes, and I think there's a strong opportunity for the town to use that as a multiplier. Where I'm going with this is that I do believe there's several emergent projects or programs that you could get involved with, with these grant opportunities, and I haven't seen a, it's very nebulous, but some seed money. Usually, these grant programs like to see design, they like to see the municipality take the lead with design, perhaps even permitting, and then they will actually bring forth the capital money to conclude the project. So perhaps as you go through this process, just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Kenny, did you say you had like four projects in mind?
I do, but I don't speak, as you know, I sit on a few different committees, but I haven't spoken with them, and I don't have, you know, true responsibility or authority to talk about it, so I'd rather not tonight.
You can put together an email, working with members of those groups.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, well, very good. Thank you all for coming out tonight. That concludes this capital improvement plan work session.